To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for the coming audience. Public comment. To receive oral communications from members of the public, members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes. The Select Board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes. Do we have any public comment? Cindy Carrier.
Hold up.
Identify yourself.
Identify myself. My name is Cindy Carrier. I'm the Director of the Newbury Council on Aging.
Very good.
Okay, so I'm here this evening because I was notified about a couple of issues sort of related to the Council on Aging. I just wanted to come in, kind of clarify things, so that we're all on the same page and that you guys are all aware that the Council on Aging staff is present and ready to serve the public. So, the first issue I was notified about was some miscommunication that happened outside of the Council on Aging related to our Veteran Service Officer the last time he had office hours. So, that was on Thursday, June 13th. Steve Bond is our Veteran Service Officer. He had stopped by our office that morning, let a staff member know he was going to be unable to hold his office hours that day. He had a class or training, something. He apologized profusely, provided business cards to her, said if anyone stops by, please give them my business card, have them reach out to me. I can certainly answer their questions, set up a meeting, whatever. Otherwise, I'll be back in July. We do work very closely with Steve, and even though his office hours are not part of the Council on, it's not a program of the Council on Aging, we are happy to help him in any aspect of that. So, there was some miscommunication that he wasn't here or whatnot. In fact, he wasn't here, but we knew he wasn't here, so we were available to answer questions. Second, I was notified that a Newbury resident had passed by the Council on Aging office on Thursday, June 20th, which I believe was last Thursday, and seeing no one at our reception desk, he had made a complaint, concern that the Council on Aging was closed. So, I just want to assure you, I was here that morning. We have volunteer receptionists who help us. I don't have a paid staff member that's here when we are open, which is same hours as Town Hall, but we do have volunteers who help us with that effort. I normally have people Monday through Thursday from, I think they're in at 10:00 a.m. in their day until 1:00 p.m. On this particular day, our receptionist had called out sick. She wasn't feeling well. So, I did not have anybody sitting at the desk. However, whenever anyone walks into the Council on Aging, you might notice we have giant bells on the door. Whenever someone walks in, one of us will spring out of our office to help whoever is there, whether it's to direct them, a lot of times it's to direct them to Town Hall, or if it's something they need from us, we are available to help. So, while I don't necessarily have someone sitting at the desk to greet people the whole time we're open, staff is always available. So, that being said, I know that there was a concern by this person that we were not there. I don't believe the person ever came into the Council on Aging because I would have heard the bells ring. That day, we had coffee at the fire station. So, when my coworker Janine came in, I left to go get the donuts for the coffee, but she was in the building. So, we generally don't leave without someone being there unless we have a big event, say at PETA Hall. So, when we do Veterans Events, when we do our holiday gatherings, things like that that I can't fit in the space downstairs, we will, all of us go, because it's kind of an all hands on deck type of thing, but I do put a sign on the door. So, I just wanted to let you know, things that I'm doing to try and mitigate this, so that there's no confusion going forward. What I did is I put a little welcome sign in a little clear frame here, and it just says, "Welcome." There is no receptionist available this afternoon, this morning, whatever. Please come in and one of our staff members will assist you. I will place this on the reception desk. It will only help if someone comes in the door. I don't know if you can see it if you're standing outside the door, you just walk by and you just think no one's there, but I tried to make the font as big as possible while still keeping it on my page. But that's an effort that I'm making to try and make sure that people know, even though there's no one sitting right there, it doesn't mean no one's in here. Please come in, we're happy to help. Second, the issue with the Veteran Service Agent, I did reach out to Steve Bond, and I said to him, just in the future, should you not be able to stay for your office hours, can you not make it for any reason, can you put a sign on the door here? Because he has his office hours here in the hearing room. I said, "If you can't make it in here at all, call me, call us in the Council on Aging."
Either one of you can call me anytime, and I know, I know it might even be short notice, but if I'm available and I can come in and, you know, be a body, I will certainly do that.
All right. Well, I also just said, "Let me know," and I'll put a sign on the door, just directing them with his name and telephone number, how they can reach him. But we also generally put, this is always on our calendar, his office hours, but I am starting to put a little blurb in the newsletter, just kind of who he is, what he does, type of thing. Call us with questions if you have any questions or concerns, if you can't reach him. We already put a sign on the door when we do go offsite, so it hangs on the inside of the door just saying, "The Council on Aging staff is offsite at a program. Call us, leave a message, we'll call you back." And then, if for any reason, any of us is in the building by ourselves, you know, with vacations and whatnot coming up, or someone calls out sick, if one of us has to run up here or run to the restroom or be in a meeting, I put a sign on the door that says, "We'll be right back," just so people know that we are here in the building. So, I never leave the door, even if I run to the restroom, I don't leave the door unlocked if I'm there by myself. So, the door would be locked, but I would say that I'm, I'll be right back. So, I just wanted to assure everybody that we're there, we're present, we're, you know, we never just close. But I would also ask that if anyone has questions, because this sort of was a roundabout way that I found out about it, if anyone has questions about what's going on with us, please call me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, I understand what you're saying because a lot of this information was communicated to me.
Okay.
And I found it to be kind of interesting that they said that all the lights were off and nobody was there.
Oh, even if it's hot out, I will pull the shades, particularly in our front room, it gets very warm and then we get sun right in the morning. So, I will pull the shades, but the lights are always on. Now, I will say, the door, it's kind of almost like a tinted.
Frost.
Yeah. So, it might look, but the lights are always on, but if someone opens the door, unless one of us is on, if there's only one of us there, we're on the phone, whatever, we do our best to jump right out there and assist whoever comes in. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we're there, we're ready to help, and we are always open.
Thanks, Cindy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anything else? Martha, do you have any concerns?
Martha, you don't have much time to get up with this stuff.
Thank you, Cindy.
No, no concerns, thank you.
Okay. Grants, gifts, and donations. There's a Council on Aging gift of $25 from Susan A. Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think we needed a discussion. Public hearing, I don't think so. New business. My chance to speak. Under new business, it says, "Ad hoc monument committee formation related to an armed forces monument." I went to the Historical Commission, and I sent them a letter, and it's in the package, but I'll read it. "Hello all, some time ago during citizens concerned portion of the Select Board agenda, I suggested that the town of Newbury recognize the historical significance and gratitude for all Newbury veterans. Presently, the town has memorialized via monuments veterans of Newbury's rich historical military involvement in the past periods of the Revolutionary, Civil, and World War II periods. Those are the only monuments you find in Newbury today. Military activity did not stop at that point in time. Newbury citizens served in Korea, Iraq, Afghanistan, Vietnam, and many more venues after World War II. I propose a simple monument that will be the universal symbol of gratitude for Newbury's veterans. One suggestion for the engraving might be as follows, dedicated to all Newbury citizens who have served, are serving, and will serve in all branches of the military to preserve our democracy. Please consider my proposal, feel free to contact me." They thought it was great. I told them I was talking to them because I had no idea where to place this. I thought that the upper green might be the ideal location because of the significance of the upper green. I asked if there was any kind of documents that would prohibit something being added to the upper green. There aren't, so it may be a place to put it, but I would like to get a group of veterans, non-veterans, concerned citizens to come together and try to work on this, get it done. My ideal goal would be to pay for it with donations, not have the town do it.
Like the Purple Heart.
Like the Purple Heart thing, exactly. So, I was hoping to get approval for the Select Board to go forward with this committee.
I'll make a motion to put whatever formation in place you need to start the monument committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I'm sorry, I probably should have said, "Yea, I have discussion" before we voted. But I read this, we had an Essex Vets Committee meeting last week, and this came out that same day, and I read it to the entire Essex Veterans Committee. And it was, it was, it's a great idea. It's something that we definitely need to do, something. Things that they have proposed, I know before Karen left, she was talking about, you know, the Cold War, recognizing the Cold War, and recognizing like even, even, you know, Vietnam or whatever. My personal thoughts, and it's just my personal thoughts, and I would like, I would be glad to serve on the committee with you, I don't know if we can do that or not, but is, what I don't want to do is I don't want to, and when I use the term watered down, that's probably not appropriate, but I don't want to diminish any of the current memorials that we already have. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't just, like, for example, Wes Newbury actually is pulling, and Steve will help us do this if we want, they're pulling all the DD-214s of everybody, all the veterans that have ever been in town, and they're going through them to see where they have served and what they have done, and they're actually going to individualize something on the same, on the kind of the same token. And I was, I just thought of this just a couple, just yesterday, I think, probably. What about something in the library where we actually have like a wall of honor or something, and we can, we can do the research to, and of course, I want to talk to the veterans first and foremost, and get their ideas about, about how they would like to proceed forward with us. But I was just thinking like, outside the box, maybe do something in the library, maybe do this monument, but we certainly should do something.
Right, well, yeah, we won't solve it here tonight, but those are great ideas. I carefully worded what I wrote because it addresses veterans past, present, and future.
Right.
And, you know, next year's event in some part of the world wouldn't be captured on a monument if all the others were.
And that's why I mentioned the wall, you know, the wall of honor, because we could actually, we could add names, we could, you know, we could make it big enough where we could add names to that as we go along, you know?
It's all possible, so.
We could do both.
What's that?
Probably do both.
Yeah, we could probably do, we could do both.
Just realize you have to maintain what you put in the library.
Right.
And we don't have a very good track record of maintaining Purple Heart Day celebrations. If I didn't do it, it wouldn't be done.
And the moving wall, by the way, is coming to, going to Devon's sometime this summer. I don't know the date, I wish.
Fort Devon's?
Well, it's not Fort Devon's anymore.
It's just Devon's Mess.
It's just Devon's. But yeah, and it's in association with, they have this, you probably have seen the truck, but they've got this big 18-wheeler, and it's got, it's in association with something else that's going on this summer, but I just want to throw out that out there, that it is going to be back in the state of Massachusetts again.
That's great. And I think Newbury Port is also going to establish themselves as a Purple Heart City. That's being worked on right now. Okay. Request for public property use or special permit. There's an application by the Greater Newbury Port of ovarian cancer awareness, 5K race sign on the upper green to be put up on June 25th through June 29th, and two weeks prior to September 22nd.
Motion to accept the public property special permit request.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved business license, service side parking. Stephen Mullin, 34 plumb island bulletin.
Motion to approve business license.
Second.
Any discussion?
Has he, have we already done, is this one of the ones we've already done but didn't get finished or something? Has he been, he's been in here talking about this, hasn't he?
Not since I've been here.
Not since you've been here, okay, never mind.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appointments?
I'll have discussion after we do this.
Lisa Colby to the Agricultural Commission for three years.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Jeff made it, I thought it was a very good point, that anybody that is, wants to be recognized for anything as far as even like using the upper green or being appointed to a commission, that they come and sit during that time and, so that we know, so that they know and we know that we're, they're being appointed, instead of just, you know, nobody in the audience. You had mentioned something to, you know, as far as people using public property, that it would be better for them to be here to represent themselves, but I think that the people that want to be serving on these committees should pay that same kind of respect, that they want to be on the committee, and let's just meet them up close and personally at one time.
Yeah, if we don't tell them that, then they, so probably the process has to change a little bit.
Right, and so.
Reappointed. Somewhere written on the document should be, please.
Right, and I'd like to make a motion to suggest that anybody that wants to serve on any committee, board, or commission, or use public property, that that is part of the application, and that they attend that meeting for approval.
Unless they have a real good excuse.
Right. Just to clarify, for the process next year?
I think it's something that we.
Yeah, to discuss and to, you know, start the wheels turning, I guess.
And Leslie, possibly, this is just Dana talking, possibly just like the reappointments, probably not so important because we.
I would like to see the reappointments go down. And here's the reason why, because we had a discussion a couple of weeks back.
Wait one second, we're ahead of it. We had, you made a motion.
I made a motion.
Second motion? I didn't hear a second.
So, what is this, what did you motion?
Make the motion again.
To get this, to get the wheels turning, to get this, you know, rewritten, to put onto the documentation, so when they.
And what you want is appointments, reappointments, and use of town property?
Public property, yes.
That's what you want.
That's a lot, by the way.
It is a lot, I understand that.
Maybe.
Is there a second? You don't catch a discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. I think maybe, I think Alicia should be here for this, first off, and then I, just, Tracy and David, if you guys, what do you guys think about this? Like, I.
I mean, going, sorry, going through the process this year, I would say we did have a few folks who wanted to read their letters into the record, which they did, which was very good. Specifically going with the one-year reappointments, it is kind of a big ask to ask people who are already volunteering their time to then come in for this, then take time out of their day to then go down and get sworn in from the clerk, and then do their regular business of actually going to do the thing that they want to be appointed for. Just for what it's worth, I got some negative feedback this year from several people saying, you know, "Why do I have to do this? Can I just check a box to say, 'Yes, I want to continue'?" They didn't really see the necessity in writing a full letter to the board. So, just feedback from some of the appointments.
Tracy?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, we used to have people who were interested in serving, that was pretty common. We used to have them come in for a period of time, and I don't think we have probably the last five or six years.
It's new.
Let me just add in, I would not want the fact that someone did not come in to be held against them, to say, "They're not, obviously, they're not interested, we shouldn't vote for all them," because they didn't show up. Okay, so, I would like to table this till we have a full board, when Alicia is here, and we can have, be thinking about this between now and then. Is that fair?
And I think I'd like to add to that discussion before it ends, that it's a lot to ask, it's a lot of moving parts. It might be just, I know I don't have much of a voice, it might be just new appointments that we look at.
I, one of the considerations that made me think about this was somebody that's on the Rec Committee, and there was, there was a difference in opinion how the answer was given as far as if they were interested or not. So, there was a question, there were two questions asked, and David, I know you remember this, but it was a question of, "Are you interested, are you still interested on being on the Rec Committee? If you are, please put in your paperwork for it." And the answer was, "I will." And the answer should have been, "I am still interested and I will." So, it was a very confusing moment, that, to me, the answer didn't come out very clear, and that's, that's where, you know, like where I'm coming from on this.
I remember you brought that up, the letter indeed was from the Chair of the Rec Committee.
"I will," did not say.
You asked that, but I mean.
No, it's, it's, it's part of the English, it's part of English grammar. "Will you put in, will, are you still interested?" And the answer came back, "I will." "I will" is not the answer. "I am" is the answer. So, it was, it was, it was not presented properly, and I still have, personally, I still have a little bit of a problem with it because if you look back and you put your grammar and your, and your, all that together, it, there were, that was an answer to the second half of the question, and that's why I'm making the suggestion, so that if there is a question on something like that, they are here to be able to.
Verbal change from "I will" to "I want to do it," is that what you're thinking?
No.
The confusion was, "I will submit the letter," or "I will serve on the board." That was the confusion.
No, the question was.
He submitted the letter.
"Are you still interested in serving on the board?" "I will" is not the right answer.
Okay. He got elected, he was.
He was elected, I understand that though, but what I'm saying is, it was incorrect.
So, I appreciate your idea. I'd like to table it, like I said, to Alicia, Alicia is here, and we can have the full board and discuss the pros and cons of doing this, okay?
And I suggest you be very careful, you don't scare people off before they start.
I'm not gonna scare.
It's tough to get volunteers for committees in this town. Newbury Town Day Committee never came to be, no Newbury Town Day. David, you're gonna have to brush up on your grammar to make sure these letters are grammatically correct, okay?
Just, the only thing I was thinking, beware, though, we may have people who are not native English speakers as well, and that could translate to their right.
The burden rely is on our shoulders to, to make sure that we understand it correctly. Just, because I don't want it to go down the line and just, you know, that's not what his intention was, and then we voted on him, and that maybe was not what his intention was. It's a double-edged sword to protect both the applicant and the people that are giving the permission to go forward with it. That's all.
Okay, so now legally what we have to do, there was a motion that was second, we went into discussion.
And we tabled it.
We tabled it. Okay?
Yep.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Does it have to be a motion to table it?
Motion to table.
Second.
Any discussion on tabling it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank goodness.
Thank you.
Thank goodness. John Farrar, Council on Aging.
We didn't vote on.
Oh, we didn't vote, I'm sorry.
We got a vote on Lisa.
Lisa Colby, did we, you made a motion.
Motion is second, the vote is now.
We had discussion, the vote is now. Lisa Colby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John Farrar, Council on Aging, three years.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance Committee, three-year appointments for Joseph Ali.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vanessa Rossi.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in voting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Frank Piscanti.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Robin Etheridge, Lower Green Local Historic District Study Committee, one year.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open Space Committee, these are one-year appointments. Mike Carbone.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christina Hoffman.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
William Hoffman.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. The discussion is a husband and wife team sitting on the same board. Is that a conflict of interest?
This is a conflict of interest.
Don't believe so, but we could certainly run it by council to confirm.
You know, it's just, you know, the matter of discussion out of session, I guess.
Well, yeah, but they, they wouldn't be a.
Quorum?
A quorum. You know, Doreen and I don't always agree with everything that we're doing.
True, I know that.
Yeah, it can be a real rarity to, in the household, but that was my only concern.
I may say they've both been serving already.
Okay.
On the committee, and they both.
Right, they're on the, they're on the committee.
They're on it already, and they're both very excellent members.
Okay.
Martha, thanks for that input. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. David Powell. Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mark Sand, Recreation Committee, one year.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. And you're probably gonna hate me by the end of the night. My only, the discussion I would like to have is that every person that serves on the Rec Committee's time runs out exactly at the same time. Should that be a staggering, you know, that, you know, a few people run out.
That's in the bylaws, I think.
That they can all run out at the same time?
They can only be a one-year appointment.
I know they're a one-year appointment, but if they all run out at the same time, isn't that kind of unusual?
But if it's in the bylaws, then it's okay to do that. They're conforming to the bylaws.
They all, they, all of them are only one-year appointments, so you can't stagger it.
Well, you know, 24 gets an appointment, 25 gets an appointment, 26 gets an appointment.
No, but, but the 24 person in 26 isn't even going to be on the committee anymore because their initial appointment was only for one year.
Oh, Christ. Oh, Christ.
You can't stagger one-year appointments.
Christ is not here tonight.
He is always with me.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Of what, Mark, yeah?
Of Mark Sand.
Doing Mark, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm looking at his letter to see if he said will or shall or.
Knock it off.
Oh, I love it.
Okay, old business, non-town administrator report.
Yay.
I've got nothing.
I don't have my.
Although I did want to say how grateful I am for David. He really um, during this, this period of time, kept things rolling. His judgment was exceptional, I, I couldn't be happier um, to have him here, and I really appreciate everything he did. And these are the times when you um.
Thank you, David.
In addition to David, all the um, you know, being able to work with such consummate professionals in the manager's roles. It, it, it really kept things going. It did, it absolutely did, so I really appreciate it.
David, any town administrative report from you?
Uh, I don't believe so, uh, the only thing uh, noteworthy was the paving project at Hanover and Route One should start. The weekend after July first, so I think it's July fifth, Friday night would be the first night of construction.
Yeah, they've actually already started.
They're, they're, they doing laydown?
They, 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 what they've done is they've, they've break down lanes on both sides.
Yep.
They've carved them out because I can see where they're gonna stagger where the, where the traffic goes. And just to say, I was going down um.
By Nyla?
Oh, well, no, I got to, I got to, I was coming from Middle Road to Route One, heading towards Hanover. And I, I was making the left turn right there, and I turned down the wrong lane because the cones, there was only one police officer there. And the cones were really confusing and it was brand new, you, you know, so just, it's something to watch out for if you're driving around, that's all.
Oh my God, sounds like fun.
On the road, it'll be nice when it's done. Thanks, David.
Sure.
Correspondence, there was a right to farm disclosure, one ninety-five High Road, that was included in your package.
Yep.
And. Stripe Bass Film Project, July eighth through twelfth.
I, I can update on that if you want.
Great.
So we have the call from a Jason.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Jason Rarick, he's from the show The Meat Eater, uh, I'm not familiar with it, but I guess they're doing, they're filming a documentary on Stripe Bass. The history of Stripe Bass fishing in this area in general. Uh, he wanted to know what the restrictions were for filming. Um, all they're doing is, they'll be on a boat leaving from Gloucester, taking drone and B-roll footage as they make their way to Newburyport. Where they're gonna land, and then they're gonna film most things downtown and downtown Newburyport. Just wanted the board to be aware in case anyone asks, why is there a boat with a drone?
You can tell them that the refuge has restrictions on drones.
He was aware of that, yeah, so I did, I pointed out that, he, he's calling from Montana, so I did say this. It's a little bit different here in that there's multiple municipalities along your, your route, the sailing route that they're gonna do, so you may wanna contact each of them and the refuge, so.
Are they actually gonna stop and do any fishing themselves?
I don't believe so, I think they're just shooting now for background footage, and then they're gonna do interviews with people who are currently active fishing, fishermen and, and retired fishers.
I didn't realize that there were such strict restrictions as far as size of the bass.
Eight to thirty-one inches, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like a little teeny window.
It's a very small slot.
Which is kind of intuitive, over the years, it's always been a restriction, size, and anything over was fine.
But now the older ones, they want to keep it.
Well, it's the fact of.
Preservation of the species.
It's weird.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, David.
Sure.
They stole Tony's poll a couple of weeks ago.
Two thousand twenty-three Essex County Sheriff's Department Annual Report.
So I do have that here for anyone who wants it, um, as you can see, it's, it's a pretty big document, I can email it to anyone who wants it. If you'd like a printed copy, I can print one, but I didn't wanna waste the several hundred pages to print everybody a copy. Like, it's here.
If you wanna see David. Uh, meeting updates, anybody Dana?
Yeah, I, I went to Essex Vets last week, and uh, it's nothing really exciting. We did, we talked about the monument thing, I just wanna do a shout out. I also went to Andrew Dougherty's graduation party on Hanover Street. And he graduated from Triton this year, and he got accepted to three academies. Which I have never, ever heard of. He got accepted to the Air Force Academy, he got accepted to the Naval Academy, and he got accepted to the Coast Guard Academy. And uh, which, which is crazy.
What, what did he pick?
Navy.
Navy.
He's going to the Naval.
That's what they announced at the graduation, I think.
He le, he left today, going to the Naval Academy, so I, I just uh, I just thought that that was something worth mentioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's, he was an Eagle Scout, you know, he worked with me on some flag ceremonies and stuff in town, so. He was a great contributor in town on some, on a lot of our Memorial Day services and that kinda stuff, so. Good job.
Definitely.
Leslie? Any meeting updates?
I have none.
Jeff?
None.
Okay, I, I went to the historical council, like I told you. Um, and they actually looked at samples of the material for the roof, for the old schoolhouse. And I think they have a process of take, making their number one and number two choices of what they'd like to see, the material and the color. Um, number two will be ranked in, in July, the next meeting. And uh, when they do that, they will go through the, the normal quoting bidding process, like, like we normally do. Um, I also went to the MRBA meeting, Jeff, you were there for a while. Um, of interest to me, um, the Pink House will be up for auction. Uh, it'll be, uh, GSA will put it, write it up within the next couple of weeks. Um, I know there's a rally this Saturday at Market Square in Newburyport from one to three. Uh, people still have hope, trying to save it, but you know, it's either demolish it or pick it up and relocate it. And it's not gonna fit down Rolf's Lane, you can't move it down Rolf's Lane, and the only other place, you can't take it through Newburyport. And, you know, I'm not sure if there's a place for it on Plum Island, but we'll, we'll see what happens with that. But of real interest at the MRBA meeting, there were representatives there from Babson College. They are going after a grant for fifteen million dollars for science-bound solutions for coastal resiliency. Erosion and coastal resiliency. And, you know, they hold MRBA, that group that Jeff is very active with, in, in very high regard. Because there are all kinds of ideas, all kinds of people working on it. And the toy box is right here where they are, okay, the coast is here, so we'll see, we'll see how that goes.
Bill, let me just add on that, because some of the people, because it's a concept that's hard to get. I went out to the Babson presentation, Peter and I did, and I was impressed with the campus, it's quite a school. I didn't realize Babson was that much of quite a school. Um, it's an accelerator program grant procurement. And the accelerator program is to try to stabilize and put in place. Companies that could become integrated into something to do with vulnerability. And would be self-sustaining, so that they would continue to exist, that would enhance. Towns and cities vulnerability status. In other words, could it be something to do with the electric grid? Could it be something to do with the insurance process? Could it be something to do with a living coastline wall? So it's really, it's complicated, like, people didn't get it at the MRBA. Though they talked about their problems. The scope and breadth of that grant is to find the money, to find the businesses. To interest the businesses and get them started that would ultimately benefit the towns.
And the professor who actually was there at Peter Hall, is, his specialty at Babson is entrepreneurial.
Well, Babson is number one.
Number one for that, I, I didn't realize that, to be honest, I didn't realize that.
And I mean, they had Woods Hole on the, on the, um, I mean, it, they, that was, I mean, they were a powerhouse, I was surprised. But it's a new, I guess accelerator type things like that are all around, but they're not easy to define. And we kinda lost the definition a little bit, so.
Does this fall into like, also climate control?
Well, it, it, you know, anything to do with, anything to do with coastal complications kinda goes back to those issues. Nowadays anyway, unless it's something that's an invasive plant or species, which a lot of times goes back to climate change. But um, so it's kind of an advanced concept. And we have another meeting coming up in, in Essex where uh, they're gonna meet again one more time, and then they're gonna try. There's two other schools, there's three other schools that are trying to um, and I believe it's a Noah grant, he say?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, they're, they're a pretty serious grant, and pretty technical.
Did you say fifteen million dollars?
Fifteen million dollars, yeah. It's a four-year program. And I, like Jeff said, there are other schools in competition, that will be in competition for it, so. It could be, you know, could be something worth watching.
And Bill, I will say something, this is not a meeting update, but it's an update. The reason that my voice, and one of the reasons that my voice sounds like this is, I'm in the process of working with spraying pepper weed. But because it was windy, we got into pulling pepper weed the other day, and this is for people that can hear us. So if you have pepper weed on your property and you go out and try to pull it. Make sure you're not allergic to it, like my, my throat and my lips taste just like I pulled. The name is, is fitting for the plant.
Can we call you Dr. Pepper?
Oh, gosh, it's like, I wish I had, I wish, I wish, I wish I had some Dr. Pepper. So, but it's kind of, it's a wild plant, very invasive. Um, there's a national movement to get rid of it, it's from one coast to another.
Was it brought up to the states from another?
Well, no, it, it came in bilges of boats and things, and it's, what it does, it produces high salinities and high salt content. So it could change the, the growing habitat of everything around, it's a tough, it's a tough plant, bad plant.
Well, it, yeah, it wipes out all the plants with, with, with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Process, so.
Okay. Um, were, were there any meeting minutes to approve?
There were none.
No, there were none, okay. Um, warrants, and a motion to approve, to sign warrants.
Motion to approve warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive session not to be held, related date, the uh, the package wasn't available to, to go through it.
Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Oh, thanks, Bill.